Get this meeting started here. It's 7:01, so welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting. I'm going to begin the meeting with our invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask the city clerk to introduce those two individuals, please.
All right, let me just make sure it's recording because it doesn't look like it is. Or... This is not here. Okay. Okay, sorry. It looked like it wasn't recording, so it's on now. Okay, tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Robert Edwards of Sephri Ministry, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Rue.
All right, let's go stand. Do you have a pastor with us? No?
He might have not gotten here on time, so would anyone else like to lead?
Well, let's just... Our police chaplain's here? Where's our police chaplain? Do you have a police chaplain? Oh. Bill, why don't you lead us in the invocation?
Divine and gracious Creator, we know you by many names. We know you in many images. You have created each one of us in your likeness and created each one of us as individuals. You have called on all of us to be people of peace, not to seek violence, but to seek love, to seek justice, and to seek the goodness in each one of us. As a city council, help us to promote our unity tonight. We're all God's children, deserving of respect, dignity, and equality. You taught us that more than 2,000 years ago, and you continue to teach that to us. Let us be people of goodwill. Let us work tonight in good faith for the best of this city. And let us not be divided, but let us be united. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. This is our pledge. Oh, sorry, Bill. Back to back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I didn't know I was doing back to back. And I did the best I could for the last minute.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue, for doing the pledge and the invocation. Obviously, part of the invocation, she'll just remember all the difficulties of going around the world right now, especially in the Middle East, and we have their prayers in our mind. I also want to adjourn this meeting in the memory of former jail manager of the Mona Vista District, Mark Kinsey. Unfortunately, he passed away this past weekend. And I think all of you knew Mark Kinsey or dealt with him. Now we'll begin with the roll call.
Councilmember Mendez? Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Rue?
Present.
Mayor Protem Martinez? Here. Mayor Dutre?
Present as well.
Thank you.
I also like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of former police sergeant Jerry Sharabuck. And some of you probably knew Jerry as well. I knew Jerry, and so would adjourn the memory in his meeting. So now we'll go on to presentations, and do we have two presentations? We're doing new employees from the Police Department. Let's start with the Police Department first, and then we have a second one will be from the Community Development Department. So I think Chief... Oh, there he is. Different Chief today. So let's come on down here, guys, and we'll...
Evening. I have the privilege today, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, Mr. City Manager Starr, of introducing our newest lateral police officer, Amanda Aguilar. Amanda was raised in the city of San Bernardino. She graduated from Colton High School and went on to earn her Bachelor's of Arts degree in sociology with a minor in pre-law from California University, San Bernardino. In 2019, Amanda began her law enforcement career with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department where she worked custody. She laid her lateral to the Palm Springs Police Department where she completed the field training program and served the Palm Springs community as a solo police officer. Outside of her professional duties, Amanda enjoys working out, attending run clubs, spending time with her family and friends, and exploring new coffee shops. She is honored to join the Montclair Police Department and is my honor to ask you to help me in welcoming Amanda to our Montclair family.
That's it? You get a picture? Got it? Thank you.
Well, that was quick. In a rare moment for our department, I'm happy to introduce our newest assistant planner for the Montclair Planning Department. We... She... Her name is Denora Ochoa. So Denora, if you would make your way up, please. Yeah? Denora joined our department in May, and she's quickly adapted to our way of doing things here in the city, and I'm glad to present her to you today. Denora is a proud Ontario native, graduate of Chaffee High School. If you think that's good, it gets better because she also went to earn her degree, Bachelor of Science, from urban and urban and regional planning from the greatest school in the country, which is Cal Poly Pomona. So she's a fellow Bronco. She developed her strong sense of or interest in land use and community development and sustainable planning practices while she was there. She comes most recently from the county of San Mateo after doing some time, I think also, working for the city of Fontana and Claremont. So she's familiar with the area, familiar with how things and what things look like and should look like in our community. In her free time, Denora enjoys playing soccer, hiking, and spending time at Disneyland. She's excited to support the planning efforts of our community and contribute to the community that's close to her heart and home in Montclair. So I think we have ourselves a good fit for the next generation of planners that are coming that will take the mantle at some point in time here for our community. So I'm glad to again announce the appointment of Denora Ochoa for our Planning Department.
Okay, I did one semester at Cal Poly Pomona, then I had Fenchworth, Cal State San Bernardino. We'll leave that there. But we'll go to...
I can one-up you. I was there for eight years.
How many years?
For a four-year degree.
Oh, four years, okay.
It's called joining a fraternity.
Okay, so we'll go on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council. That's any items, anything that's not on the agenda, or any of the consent calendar items are on the agenda for discussion. You have five minutes to address the city council. Obviously, the council can't respond or comment on any items not on the agenda. We do have public hearing items as well, and there'll be hearings for that or public comments for that will be taking place later in the agenda. And so I'll ask the city clerk if we have any speakers.
I have four speaker cards. The first one is Joan Lindhorst.
Good evening, Mayor Dutre.
Hello, how's it going?
Councilmembers. For those that don't know me, my name is Joanie Lindhorst, and I live on Kingsley and Fremont Street with my husband Ron. And what I want to talk to you about, I'm not an orator, so please bear with me. Years ago, we wanted to have a stop sign at Kingsley and Fremont. And it was fine. The traffic wasn't really that bad, but there were schoolchildren at that time. We finally... Well, then, they started having the work on Holt Boulevard, and the traffic moved to Kingsley, and our traffic doubled. Sometimes it was hard for all of us to get out of our driveways because of the traffic. We finally got the stop sign, and the traffic obeyed the stop sign. And after a while, they got used to the stop sign being there, and they would stop at the stop sign, and they would hesitate and go right on through if there was no traffic. And sometimes nobody even paid attention to the stop sign. And that is still happening now. I've seen it myself. The... I... One time, I was... Years and years ago, I was going home from Chino, from work to Pomona, and I took Philadelphia. And anybody that has been here for a while knows of Jake's Market on Philadelphia towards the east. I don't remember the cross street. Well, I was one of those ones that hesitated and went on through, and I had a cop on my tail quick. And he did all the preliminary work that he was supposed to do. But bless his heart, he didn't give me a ticket, but he did tell me one thing that I remember to this day. He said, "Lady, that sign says stop, not hesitate." Believe you me, I stop at stop signs now. Okay, the next thing is traffic going west on Kingsley. Some people take off like they are contestants in Winter Nationals, and you can hear them go all the way down halfway to Mona Vista Street. I'm saying this for your information. If you want to do something about it, fine. We've lived with it for a while, so I guess we can live with it longer. But there is another subject I wanted to talk to you about, and I hope I'm speaking for a lot of the women in Montclair. Please look for a fabric store to come into Montclair. We are losing all our fabric stores. We've lost Fabric Patch on Arrow years ago. We are now losing Joanne's out at the Ontario Mill, Chino, and Riverside. They're closing down. The only place we can go is in Hollywood or LA. I will not go into LA. I have been there, and they're idiots. They... If you... They want in, and you don't let them in, they'll find a way to get you to stop and let them in. So please, look for something to... With the accessories for it, scissors, needles, thread, pins, and stuff like that. But we need a fabric stop around here. And if we do get one here, we're going to have people around in the other cities coming in, and of course, that's going to be tax money coming into Montclair, too. So think about it, if you would, please. Thank you for letting me vent myself. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denise Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Montclair Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Dutre, Mayor Protem Martinez, councilmember, staff, and audience. I have a couple of things I want to share with you about the Montclair Chamber of Commerce, but before I do that, I want to talk about a fabric store here in Montclair that's on Holt Boulevard between Central and Mona Vista. It's called Casa de Tela Fabric. And they have bolts and bolts and bolts of wonderful fabric at a very reasonable price. So I would encourage anybody who's interested in fabric to please go there. It's on Holt Boulevard between Central and Mona Vista on the north side of the street. Casa de Tela. So that wasn't on my agenda, but I will tell you this. Here's what we all know. We know that small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and that is why the chamber is working so hard to make sure that these small businesses get the attention that they need. So there are a couple of upcoming events that I hope that all of you in the community and here at City Hall will attend. It's a ribbon cutting for Mint Collision this coming June 18th at noon. The address is 5072 West Mission, and it's Mint Collision at one of our newest chamber members, our newest businesses on Mission Boulevard Mint Collision, June 18th at noon. Secondarily, there's something that all of us have to do. All of us have to go to lunch. We all eat lunch every day. We have breakfast, lunch, and dinner. You can tell by looking at us. We have breakfast, lunch, and dinner every day. So one of the ways that we're supporting restaurants here in the city of Montclair is once a month, we have... We call it a lunch mob. So we pick a restaurant, and we just all go there. So the last time we did it, we did it at Gina's Pizza, and there was a huge crowd there. We did it again at... I can never say the name. I apologize. Taco Diro to Portillas. I'm sure I said it wrong, but you know what I'm talking about. So this month, because we do it every month, so this month it will be at Buffalo Wild Wings at 4955 North Montclair Plaza Lane on June 26th at noon. And next month, I'll probably be here, back here, to talk to you about the July Lunch Mob, and I hope you will all join us. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Neha from Senator Susan Rubio's office.
Hello, good evening, everyone, mayor, city council, and our attendees. I am here to just share information. We have an event coming up this Saturday, June 21st, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m., and I would like to invite you all to attend or share this information with anyone who could benefit. We are going to be having this open house at our Ontario office. That's 1520 North Mountain Avenue, Building East, South Parking Lot. We're going to be having hot dogs there for our residents who come out and join us. Other resource vendors such as Covered California, Employment Development Department, CHP, God's Pantry, Ontario Women's Club, Project Resilience, Kaiser, and many more. So if anyone is interested, I do have flyers with information, and we're also posting it on social media. We would love to see as many of you guys come out and join us. And the senator will also be delivering legislative updates during this event. And thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you very much. I already RSVP'd for that, so... Thank you.
Neha, where will the flyers be? Okay, thank you.
All right, our final speaker is Donato Jimenez.
Hello, good afternoon, council. I'm Donato Jimenez, resident at Mona Vista Avenue. Here for a couple of concerns or updates on the Mona Vista widening. Been getting calls from my neighbor while I'm at work about a lady coming from the city taking measurements about the city widening on Mona Vista. Just kind of want to get a clear-cut answer. Is it happening? Is it not happening? Is it in the five-year? What I was told, it was not in the budget, so I kind of just want to get an update. Also, the truck situation on Mona Vista has not improved since the last time I've been here. When I leave to work at 3:00 a.m., same trucks. When I come home in the afternoon, 1:00 p.m., same trucks. When I'm about to go to bed right now at 8:00 p.m., same trucks. Nothing's gotten better. Just wanted to see if there's an update or any plan to, you know, better this situation. It's getting really frustrating.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Hold on. Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Or inquiry. Given that the resident leaves early due to work commitments, if staff can provide a response at any... Now, to accommodate him since he's in the room, could that be done, please?
Well, first of all, City Manager Starr, can you address Mona Vista Avenue widening, what's going on there, and can you address the truck traffic, the alleged traffic?
Well, all we're doing at this point in time, as far as Mona Vista widening, is doing engineering studies. We need to determine what the potential for cost is. But in order to do the widening, we would actually have to acquire property along Mona Vista Avenue. That would mean homes, and until those homes come on the market or unless the council were to make a decision to do condemnation, any widening project on Mona Vista Avenue would be years away. So it's not an issue of budgeting. This year, next year, or any year, it's a matter of collecting those properties. And the engineering study will determine what the best approach is for widening, so that would help us determine what homes we would have to acquire and whether or not additional right-of-way from other homes would have to be also part of that undertaking. So we are years away from any action related to widening Mona Vista Avenue. But in the meantime, we do have to conduct a study to determine what direction this would go, present that to the city council, and then get further direction as to whether or not this is even an approach the city council wants to take. So I don't think any of the residents need to be concerned at this point in time. It's really going to be a matter of waiting until that engineering study is completed to determine what the best course of action is for the city to follow. In relation to the trucks on Mona Vista Avenue, I know for a fact that the Police Department actively works Mona Vista Avenue. There has been electronic signage, as well as the existing signage that is on Mona Vista Avenue directing trucks to not use that segment of Mona Vista Avenue south of the 10 freeway for a truck route. In fact, the signage is so numerous that really how any truck driver doesn't know it is... boggles the mind. But nonetheless, we do recognize that it is a problem. But also, too, one has to take into consideration the type of trucks that are using Mona Vista Avenue. So if you're talking about big rigs, those vehicles cannot be using Mona Vista Avenue as a truck route. But residents often confuse what trucks are considered appropriate and what are considered inappropriate. So for example, boxcars. Do they weigh more than 10,000 pounds? Yes, they do. And under normal circumstances, they would be prohibited from using Mona Vista Avenue. However, the code is quite clear that there are exemptions for use of any street in the city other than truck routes for these trucks to use those streets for delivery purposes. And frankly, boxcars, as well as Amazon vehicles and other delivery vehicles typically weigh more than 10,000 pounds these days, particularly when they're loaded. And they operate under the exemption clause of the municipal ordinance. So a lot of the photos that have been forwarded to staff related to the types of vehicles that are using Mona Vista Avenue and other streets that are not designated truck routes happen to fall under the exemption category. The Police Department cannot be spending time stopping all of these vehicles to determine whether or not they are making deliveries. The presumption normally would be that that is exactly what they're doing, primarily because that is the direction of online shopping. The vendors are purchasing larger and larger vehicles for the purpose of making the delivery so that it is more cost-effective, not only for the company, but for the drivers as well. So really, I think what we are talking about here is the big rigs. And the Police Department has made a concerted effort to target the big rig vehicles that traverse any street in the city because our belief is that most of them are heading down towards Brook Street where there is a lot of heavy truck traffic in that area. Parking is permitted in that area, but there are a lot of industrial buildings in that area that require the delivery of these types of vehicles. We are trying to educate them. We have electronic billboard signs in that area to advise them that they are not to be using Mona Vista Avenue. And the Police Department is out there in force to the degree that they can. Residents have to realize that police officers are being required to respond to a wide range of calls throughout the day. They often get bogged down on these calls, and they are not available simply because somebody makes a call related to something like a big rig truck traveling down the street. But as soon as an officer is free, they will respond to that area, and if they can identify and locate the vehicle, they will certainly address it and issue a citation. And I know that the department has implemented or issued a number of citations related to vehicles in that area. The chief has assured me that in their briefings, they remind the officers on almost a daily basis that they are to respond to these vehicles and issue them citations. These types of vehicles are not exempted. There is no reason for them to use non-truck routes because they're not making deliveries into residential areas or any other part of the community that otherwise would not require these types of vehicles. So I just need the community to know, as well as the council, that there is a concerted effort to address this. There may be a number of vehicles that are doing this in violation of municipal code. The department cannot be there throughout the day, but when they are there using the street... And I would also say that Mona Vista Avenue is probably used by the Police Department more than any other street in the city because they are routinely using Mona Vista Avenue to get back and forth from the police station on Arrow Highway, at Arrow Highway and Mona Vista Avenue. And so it's a problem that continues, but we assure the community that it is a problem that we are addressing.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation, sir, and accommodating the resident.
All right, so we'll move on to public hearings. We will start with the first public hearing, Resolution Number 25-3480, and this is the established in the Community Facility District. Excuse me, can I have staff presentation?
Our Economic Development Agency Director, Mikey Fuendis, will be making the presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'll be doing the presentation for the CFD Number 2025-2. I would like to introduce that we do have legal counsel, Richard Wall from BB&amp;K in attendance, as well as Diego De Leon from David Tausick and Associates. If there's any questions that I can't answer. And then we have Reese Peterson, Vice President of Development from Trammell Crowe Residential, who is also available if there's any questions. He did intend to be here in person, but there were some unforeseen circumstances that did not allow him to attend. But he is available via Zoom if there's any questions. And with that, I will start the presentation.
Before you go, before you, Mikey, go, I have a script here.
Yes.
Yes, so let's start with the script here. So obviously, this is the time and place to set the public hearing on the formation of the City of Montclair Community Facility District Number 2025-2, the levy of special district area, and the provision of certain services. And so at this time, this public hearing is now open. And I'll ask the city clerk, has the notice of the public hearing been mailed and published in accordance with law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with law.
Okay. I will now call on staff for a report regarding the formation of this CFD.
Of course. Perfect. Okay, so tonight, we will be discussing the City of Montclair Community Facilities District Number 2025-2, the Alex and Kendry Expansion. And so the Melrose Community Facilities Act governs the CFD process. The Melrose Community Facilities Act was adopted in 1982 and provides an alternative financing method for local governments. The Act allows local government agencies to finance public improvements through bond indebtedness, and the Act allows local government agencies to also finance maintenance of improvements in charge for certain community services like police and fire protection services.
Mike, we're having a little problem on the...
Hold on for a second. We're having a technical issue with the screen.
So we'll try to get that addressed, but in the meantime, let it make the presentation and refer to the hard copy document that was presented to you.
Yes, so I'm just right now on page two, so while IT does try to fix this issue, I'll continue. So the Act allows local government agencies to also finance maintenance of improvements in charge for certain community services like police and fire. And a community facilities district is created by a local government agency with defined boundaries. Page three, the Melrose Community Facility Act. The formation of a CFD requires a two-thirds majority vote from registered voters within the proposed boundaries of the CFD. If fewer than 12 registered voters exist, current landowners vote, with each landowner receiving one vote per acre owned. And typically, the CFD process is started by one property owner, as typically, it's usually one entity that starts the formation process. And then, once approved, a special tax lien is placed on each property within the CFD, and the property... And the property owners pay the special tax annually on their property tax bill. Special taxes imposed by a CFD cannot be based on property value and instead are calculated using formulas that consider property characteristics, such as use, square footage of units, parcel size, and also include a maximum rate that can be charged annually. Adoption of local goals and policies for community facility districts. The Melrose Act requires that a local agency forming a CFD to establish local goals and policies regarding their CFD process. The City of Moncler Statement of Local Goals and Policies Related to CFDs was adopted by the city council on January 3, 2011, pursuant to Resolution Number 11-2872. And as of today, the city has three CFDs that have been formed. The first CFD is CFD 2011-1, which includes the development projects of the Paseos, Vista Court, and Alexon Kendry. And that includes a special tax related to the maintenance of public right-of-way as well as public safety services. The next CFD is CFD 2011-2, Arrow Station, and also includes a special tax for the maintenance of public right-of-way as well as the public safety services. And the most recent CFD is out of CFD 2025-1, The Village at Moncler. And it includes maintenance, or taxes, I should say, related to the maintenance of public right-of-way as well as public safety services. And just a little bit about the Alexon Kendry Expansion. The Alexon Kendry Expansion received approval from both the Planning Commission and the Moncler City Council, with final approval by the city council occurring on July 18, 2022. The project is within a residential development on approximately 2.85 acres located at the intersection of Montevista Avenue and Arrow Highway. It is the sixth residential project within the boundaries of the North Moncler Downtown Specific Plan. The project will provide an urban-style community with onsite amenities and is designed to operate in conjunction with the existing Alexon Kendry apartment community immediately south to it, which was completed in 2020. And the project will feature 137 apartment units. Proposed Community Facilities District Number 2025-2, the city council has directed staff to finance maintenance of public improvements and a portion of public safety costs for projects within the North Moncler Downtown Specific Plan. This action initiates proceedings to form City of Moncler CFD Number 2025-2, the Alexon Kendry Expansion. And we have a current list of the property owners who have submitted a written petition requesting the formation of the CFD. And they are all subsidiaries of the Tramco Residential Development. And you can see the breakdown of the interest in each of the LLCs. And then the city had a Resolution Number 25-3478, which declared the city's intent to form the CFD Number 2025-2. And the public hearing date was set for June 2, 2025. However, with the power outage that occurred at the council meeting, we continued and adjourned the meeting until today. So today is the actual public hearing date. Proposed Community Facilities District 2025-2, Services to be Funded. The proposed CFD will include the following services to be funded by the CFD. And that will relate to maintenance services. It will relate to street sweeping, storm drain maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, curbing gutter maintenance, street signs, street maintenance, street replacement, trash removal, sewer and water line maintenance, streetlight maintenance, and electricity for streetlights, as well as a public safety component, which will include costs for police protection services, fire protection suppression services, and costs related to emergency vehicle apparatus maintenance. And then on this slide, you can see the boundaries of the proposed CFD. And you can see that's right off of Montevista and Arrow. And to the south is the existing CFD for the Alexon Kendry. The proposed costs of services for the CFD are broken down on this slide. You can see that the first set of taxes, special tax A, are related to the maintenance of the public right-of-world, and that cost is about $20,000. And the second component for this special tax for the public safety is roughly $35,000 for total tax, combined tax, for the property of $56,162.41. The estimated annual cost for the services provided to be covered by the CFD, again, is $56,162. And the CFD does have a maximum annual increase of 6% and a minimum annual increase of 2% per fiscal year. And the special tax will be levied starting fiscal year 2025-26. And then we have broken down for the actual costs for the tenants living at the property. You can see here on the slide that we have the special tax A and special tax B broken down per unit, as well as the total annual cost and then the monthly cost. So at the higher end, tenants will be paying an additional $40 per month to fund the CFD as well, and at the lower end, $19 a month for the CFD. And then you can see that the amounts that would be collected based off of the various sizes of the units, the square footage. And again, the total is $56,163 for the annual cost of the CFD. So staff tonight is making the recommendation that the city council adopt Resolution Number 25-3471, establishing Community Facilities District Number 2025-2, and the boundaries thereof, adopt Resolution Number 25-3472, call in a special election, and submitting to the voters of CFD Number 2025-2, a proposition for the annual levy of special taxes within said CFD to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the CFD and establishing an appropriations limit. Adopt Resolution Number 25-3473, declaring the results of the special election for CFD Number 2025-2, for the propositions concerning, one, the annual levy of special taxes to be paid, to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the CFD, and, two, establishing an appropriations limit, as well as conduct the first reading of ordinance Number 25-1012, levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2025 related to the CFD Number 2025-2, and set a public hearing to conduct the second reading and consider adoption of ordinance Number 25-1012 on Monday, July 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. And that concludes the presentation related to the CFD formation. And if there's any questions by the city council, I can try to answer them best as I can, as well as the consultants we have on board, as well as representatives from Tramco Residential.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before I give this to council, let me just go through this next item. At this time, are there any persons that wish to present testimony or protest regarding the formation of CFD Number 2025-2? Hearing none. To the city clerk, have any written protests have been received regarding the formation of CFD Number 2025-2?
No written protests have been received.
Great. Thank you. To the city clerk as well, are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of CFD Number 2025-2?
The registrar of voters of San Bernardino County has certified that there are no registered voters within the territory.
Okay. To the city clerk again, have the owners of all the taxable property in Community Facilities District Number 2025-2 consented to the holding the special election on June 16, 2025, immediately following this public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. The city clerk, do you concur that the special election may be held on June 16, 2025, immediately following this public hearing?
Yes, I concur.
There has been no testimony or protest received or heard. I'm prepared to close the public hearing. However, before I do that, I would like to provide anyone again, who would like to submit a written or oral comments, a final opportunity to do so. Once the public hearing is closed, we will be prohibited from accepting any further oral or written testimony. So again, anybody wish to present to the city council? If not, seeing no others who wish to speak, I declare this public hearing is now closed. It's closed. And now I will bring this deliberation back to the city council. Does the city council have any questions or comments at this time? If not, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the item as presented.
Okay. The motion, I believe, in front of us is to adopt Resolution Number 25-3471, establishing Community Facilities District Number 2025-2, and the boundaries thereof. Can I get a second to that motion? Second. Moved by Lopez, second by Mendez. And I guess we will do electronic vote on the first one. It's adopted 5-0. We'll go on to the next motion. Can I get the next motion for the adoption Resolution Number 25-3472, calling a special election? Or should I keep on reading? Submitting to the voters of CFD 2025-2, a proposition for the annual levy of special taxes within the said CFD to pay the cost of the certain services to be provided by the CFD and establishing an appropriations limit for said CFD.
I move the item as the mayor stated.
Lopez first, then Mendez second. Okay. It's adopted 5-0. And now I'll hand this over to city clerk.
Okay, I will be opening the ballots now. I have conducted and canvassed the special election. All votes are cast in favor of the ballot measures, and therefore, both of the ballot measures pass.
Okay. Thank you. I will now call for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-3473, declaring the result of the special election for a CFD Number 2025-2 for the propositions concerning the levy of special taxes to pay the cost of certain services provided by the CFD and establishing an appropriations limit. Can I have this motion, please?
I will move the item as stated by the mayor.
Lopez first. Second by Mendez. We'll vote by electronic. It's adopted 5-0. Okay, now we'll do the ordinance.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just...
Something?
Just some clarification. I think the resolution numbers in the agenda packet are the ones we should be using, not in the presentation.
Oh, okay.
I think you were saying '70, '71, and such, and it's eight, they're in the 80s. So maybe we can just back up?
We should.
Ushen, go back to number one and use the recommendations in the agenda on page 10.
Can the maker of the motion just correct the number and leave it at that?
Okay. Regards to the first, if you go to the agenda, the first motion will be the adoption Resolution Number 25-3480. Does the maker agree? That'll be Resolution Number 25-3480? Which is Lopez?
Yes.
And then the second is Mendez. Do we need to vote on that, again, being the safe side? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? Okay. First one is adopted. Then the second one was adoption Resolution Number 25-3481. I was calling for the special election. Does the maker agree with that, Lopez?
Yes.
Mendez, agree to that, second? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? The third one was Resolution Number 25-3482, declaring the results of the special election. Does the maker of the motion agree to that, Lopez?
Yes.
The second, Mendez? Yes. Okay. All in favor, state aye. Any objections, any abstentions? Now, I think we're down to the ordinance. Do we adopt the ordinance now? The first three we took care of. And now is the first reading of the ordinance. And let's just do this. Okay, so first reading, consider ordinance Number 25-1012, levying special tax to be collected during fiscal year 25, 26, to pay the parkway, streets, roads, and open space in the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems and public safety services, including the fire protection suppression services and police protection with respect to CFD Number 2025-2, and set a public hearing to conduct a second reading and consider adoption of ordinance Number 25-1012 on Monday, July 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. Can I get a motion for that?
I move the item as stated by the mayor.
Lopez first. Mendez second. Okay. Got to speak loud. All right, so let's vote on that, then we'll do electronic vote. Okay, that's adopted 5-0. And that it, do you have to read it by number and title now?
Yes. All right, ordinance Number 25-1012, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Moncler, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of the City of Moncler Community Facilities District Number 2025-2, Alexon Kendry Expansion, County of San Bernardino, State of California, authorizing the levy of a special tax in such community facilities district.
Includes the public hearing. And now we go on to the second public hearing. And this is the receiving filed of vacancies. Can I get staff presentation?
For this evening, will be our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Marsha Richter.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff. I'll be going through a quick kind of PowerPoint to kind of give an overview of the agenda item that was in your packet. And that's the first slide. Are we ready, Andrea? Okay. So the first thing that we need to talk about is this is a required presentation brought on by Assembly Bill 2561. It became effective January 1 of this year. It does add the Government Code Section 3502.3 to our Meyer Amilius Brown Act, and it imposes new obligations on cities, public sector agencies, related to tracking and presenting information on job vacancies. AB 2561 also states that job vacancies are a widespread and significant problem for the public sector, and the California Legislature has found that excessively high vacancy rates can contribute to negative impacts on public service delivery to citizens, increased workloads, burnout, and increased turnover. So the mandate for annual reporting and the presentation will be going over vacancies, recruitment, retention efforts. And that all needs to be done before the formal budget adoption. So that's why we're doing that this evening. If a bargaining unit's vacancy rate is at or above 20%, regardless of the reasons for the vacancies, a more comprehensive analysis and reporting is required. Another purpose of our public hearing is to increase transparency on staffing shortages in a public setting and identify how recruitment and retention challenges can be addressed, and provides an avenue to discuss challenges related to maintaining a stable workforce. Let me go back. So like I mentioned, it does require annual public hearing before the budget adoption, invites input from recognized bargaining units during the public hearing. And the city does have four recognized bargaining units. Our MCCEA... city does have four recognized bargaining units, are MCC, EA, Teamsters, MPOA, and MFFA. So we'll kind of give an overview now of our workforce, so, and we'll only be discussing today the full-time employees, all right? So we do have two-hundred-and-five full-time employees that are in our approved budget. We currently have twenty-two vacancies, and an updated sheet of the vacancies was provided to you this evening. No groups meet or exceed the twenty percent vacancy threshold. Here's the vacancy data chart that you can review, and the breakdown. So you can see our overall vacancy rate is eleven percent. Mentioned the two-hundred-and-five employees, and then the twenty-two vacancies, so you can see how those are distributed throughout the groups. Our current full-time recruitments that we have going on, we do have, you see the little asterisk by some of those positions, those are continuously accepting applications for positions, so if you go to our website, you'll be able to see those, and the different departments for those positions will contact HR when they're ready to have the applications pulled and reviewed. The other two positions listed on there, maintenance worker, that one is, they're in the process of reviewing current applicants right now, and the police services specialist position is doing in-house recruitment. Now, we have, our recruitment activity has, we've been able to acquire forty-three full-time employees that have been hired during this year. Twenty recruitments were processed, and almost two-thousand applications have been reviewed by staff. Some challenges to our recruitment activity are, sometimes we have unqualified candidates, we are using NeoGov, which is one that a lot of cities now do to help with the recruitment process and make it easy for people to apply, but with that, sometimes you, people can easily apply, so they may not really look at the job descriptions and requirements, and they'll fill out an application, and so that's how we end up with that. So that is a challenge. Oftentimes, we'll get through the whole process, and the city or agency that they might be working for makes a counter offer. There's not a whole lot we can do about that at that point, and then relocation issues can sometimes be a problem, you know, when they start it, they think, oh yeah, I want to move here, but then different family things come up, and they decide that they need to stay where they're at. So for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, these were some of the departure reasons, local government jobs, local private sector jobs, some folks resigned without any other employment, some wanted to go back to school full-time, some reasons for departing were health-related, some were terminations, and of course, we had some retirements. Some of our retention efforts, we do try to make a comparable compensation and benefit comparison with our survey cities. We try to offer a comprehensive benefits package. We do offer employee training and development, some of that is through our SEPA group, where they'll provide some work to our public works employees. We also have a contract with LCW that provides some specific training to employees, and then we've also partnered with some local universities, and they provide some discounted tuition for some of our staff. Other retention efforts, we do have the four-ten work schedule that we've had for a while, enhanced short and long-term disability program compared to the state disability program. We have premium pay components, our CalPERS retirement program, and then we had the hiring bonus program that was with our police department. Along with the retention efforts, we also try to keep our communication open with all the bargaining units. We like to provide employee recognition, that could be through their employee performance reviews, their supervisors will give a good performance review. We also try to have our all-city picnic as an employee appreciation event, and then we also work getting a sponsor for our recently-held country fair jamboree, that the employees then receive free meal at that event. We do offer competitive employer-paid benefits. We offer health vision, dental, and also life insurance. We have the deferred compensation contributions. We offer years of service awards, longevity incentives, and of course, we have paid leaves, which include all of those listed there, sick, vacation, holiday, we have for comp time, management, and bereavement. Conclusion, this presentation in the public hearing does meet our obligation for the Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one. All our groups are under the twenty percent vacancy threshold, and our overall vacancy rate, like I mentioned, was eleven percent. There's no council action that needs to be done at this time, but we do have, I think, one representative from one of our bargaining units, the MPOA, Rick Dominguez, who wanted to also present on behalf of the association, he's the president of MPOA.
Was that presentation, was it, is there a max?
That's, I'm sorry?
Is there a max, or five minutes, or how does that work?
We did, we told him at the most ten, but he said his is about six.
Okay, no problem.
Good evening, or, you guys ready? Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Dutre, city staff, members of the public. My name is Rick Dominguez, I am a sergeant with the Montclair Police Department, and I'm currently serving as the president of the Montclair Police Officers Association. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, not just as a representative for our officers, but as someone who truly believes in the mission of our department and the community we serve. Before joining the Montclair Police Department, I came from a large agency. Those departments are impressive, they often feel like machines, big, bureaucratic, and impersonal. What I found here in Montclair is something rare, a small-town, town feel. People know each other, officers know, the families, the business owners. There's a real sense of connection here, and that's something worth protecting and building upon. But as many of you know, that small-town feel comes with big expectations. We handle serious calls, violent crime, and complex investigations, just like major agencies. The difference is, we're doing it with fewer resources, and too often, with fewer officers than we need. That brings me to why I'm here tonight, to talk about our current state of our department and the ongoing contract negotiation with the city. The POA is currently in discussion with city leadership to address the longstanding issue with the gap of pay between Montclair officers and officers in neighboring cities. I want to be clear, we've never asked to be the highest-paid department, we've consistently asked to be average, not exceptional, but average, but year after year, that has been out of reach. As a result, Montclair has had a persistent issue with retention. We bring good officers, we train them, we invest in them, and we lose them to nearby departments who offer better pay, better benefits, and more opportunity. These are not just numbers on paper, they're experienced professionals walking out the door, taking years of hard-earned experience, knowledge with them. We saw this most clearly a few years ago, when staffing levels reached this crisis point. Morale was low, we had to disband our special enforcement team, we lost our traffic unit, we stopped having school resource officers in our schools, even basic patrol shifts had to be backfilled with overtime, which, you can imagine, burned officers out and only made morale worse. Yet through it all, our officers kept showing up, they kept doing the work, and now finally, we're starting to see a turn, it turned the corner. With new leadership under Jason Reed, and the addition key support roles, we're seeing signs of progress. For example, in 2024, we created a new position as part of a U.S. Marshall Task Force. One of our detectives took on a cold case, a two-thousand-nine Montclair homicide. The suspect had fled the country and remained at large for over fifteen years. Within a few months, the detective and our newly-hired crime analyst, another key 2024 addition, identified the suspect's employer in Mexico. U.S. Marshals made the arrest, and our detective successfully extradited him, the suspect. At his arraignment, the victim's family showed up in full, after fifteen years to finally see justice begin. That's the impact of investing in your police department. It's not just about numbers, salaries, it's about closure, safety, and service to our community. Imagine how much more we could do if we weren't consistently losing talent. Right now, we're already down two officers, four more are currently in backgrounds with other departments, that's six officers we could lose, six trained professionals we can't afford to replace overnight. Even with the excellent, excellent work being done by Lieutenant Zur and others in the recruitment side, we remain in a cycle of progress that is too fragile. Gains made in the past year could be erased overnight if we can't retain what we built. When we hear that this year's contract likely won't bring us to an average compensation...
Okay, we really cannot be getting into negotiations, that's unfair, putting the council in a position where they're contemplating negotiation issues, so I ask that you avoid that issue for the balance of your comments.
We understand economic caution, but public safety should be, should not be on the chopping block every time the budget tightens. If we want well-staffed, well-trained, community-focused department, we have to prioritize it. This doesn't happen through words, it happens through action. Montclair residents made their priority clear in 2020 when they overwhelmingly approved Measure L, a sales tax increase specifically to maintain essential services like public safety. I want a city, they want a city they feel protected in, and where the calls for service are answered by experienced, capable professionals. We believe in the same vision, we believe the people of Montclair and the officers who serve them are united in wanting a safe, responsive, and respected police department. But we can't build this department if we can't hold on to the people who make it work. My message tonight isn't just to request fairness in pay, it's a call for sustainability. The question isn't whether Montclair can afford to invest in its police department, the question is whether it can afford not to. We have a great department, we're moving in the right direction, but if economic uncertainty leads to another wave of attrition, we may soon face police department uncertainty, something the city has already lived through, and something we cannot afford to revisit. Let's make sure the progress we made isn't temporary, let's give Montclair officers a reason to stay, to grow, and to continue serving the community with pride it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have anybody else, Marsha? Okay.
No, that concludes, there are no other organizations.
Questions by the city council? Mendez?
Just a few questions regarding the presentation. I know you talked about if a bargaining unit's vacancy rate is above twenty percent, then you have to go into more comprehensive analysis and reporting. What is that more comprehensive analysis, since I see one of the groups is very close? And, you know, and another question about that, like, when were these numbers calculated, and are those numbers still today, or have they changed?
Right, we did this starting May twenty-third, that was our cutoff day to prepare everything, so this was at that, that moment, regarding that particular group that you're looking at, that, there are no additional right now with that?
The numbers gone since May, okay.
No, not in that group, the, where you looked, yeah, the Teamsters group, but, and the other question you had was the details that would be involved if it did go over the twenty percent?
More comprehensive analysis.
Yes, you'd, we'd have to look at, it would take much longer, because we'd have to look at every position, we would have to let you know when we ran that position, when the recruitment started, how many applicants there were, when it closed, when we may have done a second recruitment, for the entire year, we would have to give an assessment of that.
The comprehensive analysis.
Right, so every position in that group would need to be looked at.
And I think it's important that the council realize that, the bill in itself, the legislators did not seek local government participation in crafting this bill. No, not, not really, they did not really seek local government, yeah, yeah, I misheard you. But more importantly, the legislators in their wisdom to craft this bill, it was not asking for what cities were doing, they just wanted to know what the number was at the time that the count was done, kind of like the homeless count, you know, when you go out to do the point-of-count time, it doesn't matter what your homeless number was yesterday, it doesn't matter what your homeless number is tomorrow, it matters what the number was the day you went out to do the count, and this is the same thing. So if you had one person that retired, or resigned, or was terminated, or otherwise left your organization one day, you have to count that number. It doesn't matter that the very next day you started the recruitment to fill the position, the law doesn't care about that, it is a sanitized approach to dealing with the numbers of vacancies, and that's what you received. You received a presentation at the time that it was conducted, what the number of vacancies were, and it doesn't matter, although an effort was made to explain to you that we have all these efforts going on to fill those vacancies, but the law doesn't care, you're just exposed to the raw number of what the vacancies were the day that the count occurred.
Okay, and then on page nine, about current full-time recruitments, I looked online, and all of these are on there, except for maintenance worker is online, and it says that you're reviewing applicants, so I just, you pulled it down, because I don't remember it even being on there.
So the maintenance worker recruitment had been completed, and actually, there are applicants that they are reviewing right now. It was on hold, as were many vacancies on hold, while the budget was being prepared, because, and as you read your budget, you will realize that if you look at 2023, 24 tax revenues, generated tax revenues, and you compare them to the projection for 25, 26, we're actually on the negative side. So until there was greater comfort with where the budget was following, there was a temporary freeze on some of these vacancies, and some of those freezes will continue into next year until we realize whether or not there are money coming in. But in the cases of the maintenance workers, a go-ahead was provided to do a review of the applicants and move forward with hiring those individuals.
Okay, and then the last question I had was, on page eleven, under the topic, local government jobs and local private sectors, it says reasons for departure, but there's really no reason, but was that reason basically more money, their people are leaving because of more money?
It could be, I mean, that is what, you know, some folks would, or they are relocating, and so they need to go, you know, to a different agency.
It seems like the most is always the leaving for more money.
Right, typically, that is common, but you will recall, and I think that our captain can verify this, that back in the early 2000s, there was, the department migrated towards recruiting from the Orange County Academy, and we hired a number of individuals out of Orange County. Every one of those employees has left the organization to return to Orange County to work for cities in Orange County, because that's where they lived, that's where they came from, and they wanted to return to, to serving the cities that they knew, and I don't believe a single one of those Orange County individuals remains with us. That may have been for money, but in their particular instance, it was because they wanted to go back home.
You mean previous employees? We have employees right now that live in Orange County, just to let you know.
The ones we hired out of the Orange County Academy back in the early 2000s.
And then the last part of that was, I know, you know, Measure L was passed in 2020, and that was kind of the push that we talked about, I remember you and I talking about it, and it was there to help with safety, it was help public works, it was to help other areas also, but I remember just in our mid-year budget that we had, you stated, funds are allocated already for Measure L, so there's going to be no money for, you know, raises or whatever, you said that, Ed, so I just wondered... know, raises or whatever, you said that, Ed, so I just wondering, you know, are we really using all that money for the right things?
Well, I would think, the right things are what were approved by the city council, so yes. Measure L has grown to, it's like you build a freeway. The freeway is empty the day that you open it up, but within a matter of months, the freeway has filled to capacity. Tax revenues are the same thing, you pass a tax revenue and an organization finds ways to grow to fill that new revenue that is coming in. We have grown to fill that new revenue, Ontario had a hundred million dollar tax measure, and they have grown to meet that hundred million dollars, it's what happens.
Well, no, I understand that, I just, you know, that was what we sold it as.
Yes.
It was to be used for those things, and I just want to make sure that that's what we're still using it for, that's it.
It is, but money is also committed to paying bonds, the council made that commitment to pay down the 2021 lease revenue bonds with those dollars, and we still have the 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds, and we also have the pension obligation bonds, which are still general fund money, but it's directed from monies that had previously been committed to paying down our obligations to CalPERS. But as far as other things, yes, the salary increases, hiring back all the employees that were lost during COVID, all of these things take up money very quickly.
Yeah.
And if you recall, Measure L only was anticipated to generate approximately eleven million dollars, and that money's gone, it's spent.
Well, plus we got surprised by CalPERS, right?
Yes, CalPERS alone has given us a two and a half million dollar bill for new unfunded liability, you did a pension bond for sixty-three million dollars, that paid off all of our unfunded liability, and as of this year, we're looking at a two-point-four million dollar new cost on UAL, and next year, that number is going up to three-point-six million, unadjusted. That means that when CalPERS takes a look at its losses this year, and there were some significant losses in relation to the stock market early part of this year, those numbers have come back, however, in their private equity investments, which is what most public employee pension funds were migrating towards, CalPERS, I believe, had something around forty-eight to fifty-six percent of their investments that they moved into private equity, and private equity has lost significantly and is not recovering. So the stock market portion recovered, but not the private equity, and that's where they were putting the majority of their funds, that was part of their decision to revise how they were investing, because stock market wasn't producing the amount of money that they needed back in the early part of 2010 to 2020. And so private equity was the hope of everyone. Large corporations, public pensions, thought that private equity was going to be their savior, and the promise of private equity was there. The difficulty with private equity is that fifty-five to sixty percent of the investors, including public employee pension plans, don't know how private equity works, they don't know how to manage their assets, and there are very few professionals who actually are out there to advise you on private equity investment. And the public employee pensions throughout the nation are experiencing a loss as a result, and that loss is not recoverable anytime soon.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lopez.
Marcia, real quickly.
Yes.
First question. Find my tab. Is it only, and I had stepped out for a brief moment in time, is this report only requiring status on full-time employees in the organization?
That is correct.
So nothing regarding part-time at all?
Right.
Okay, that takes care of one question then, that I had as a follow-up. Regarding the Teamsters, as Xavier pointed out, that unit is one percent away from meeting the twenty percent threshold. What happens when certain employees are, for some period of time, whether permanently, temporarily, whatever, replaced by contract services? Does that still count for our numbers, or does it act against us?
So let me respond to that. So the answer, as of today, is that they count. And again, that goes to the point is, the law doesn't care what you did, what you've done, what the law cares about is that if on day one you had five employees, and on day two you contracted it out, those five employees still appear in your budget, and they'll appear in your budget until the next fiscal year. So you have to count those five employees, and it looks like there are five employees who are not out there doing a job, but in fact, you contracted the services out and the job is being done. But again, the law doesn't care.
And that kind of, I guess, will go into my first question, because for us, in the instance in which we did contract a certain number of employees, regardless of what we're paying them, they're not ours for all intents and purposes, and they're there for just the length of the contract, so why wouldn't they be classified as part-time?
Because that's how the legislation was written.
Well, they're contract employees, we don't count them as employees of the agency.
That's what I'm saying, they're really not ours.
No, they're not, and we don't count them as ours. They're contract employees, you don't want to count them as ours, because then we would have to pay benefits.
I get that, but I'm confused by this report, because we're only required to report full-time employees.
That's correct.
So for purposes of the report, contract employees on paper are classified as full-time.
No, no, they're not in this report.
They're not in this, it's just a contract.
That's where you lost me.
Right.
There are positions in the city of Montclair, we have this many positions on our books. Not all positions are funded. We have unfunded positions, the contract employees you're talking about, they'll be unfunded positions. We still have to count them. The law requires us to count them, even in our unfunded positions, am I correct, Ed?
Yes.
That's why there's vacancies.
So next year, those positions will go away, they won't appear in the budget, and they won't be part of this report next year.
I have a follow-up question that I'll have to address with you behind closed doors regarding that. And then I just want to, for purposes of clarifying, when the city manager was talking a few moments ago, and he stated that many times a state legislature will hand down new regulations without the input or the direction of the locals, I chimed in and stated they never do, so I want to make clear that, in my sarcasm, there is a little tongue-in-cheek reference there, that many times these policies that are handed down upon us are enacted by Sacramento, many of these folks are former elected officials themselves, by the way, not all, but some, who have forgotten where they've came from, and they pass down these regulations upon us, either without any funding, or without any ample time, but nonetheless, we have to do it. But that's just my tidbit on that. Is there, so we adopt this tonight, a final report obviously has to be submitted, or what it already was?
No, we just need the mayor to open the hearing, so then it's official, and then this presentation is all that we need to do to meet our obligation.
The report is the attachment, right?
Just receiving this report.
Just receiving the report.
Okay, that's what I was also wondering about, all right.
Okay, someone will open this public hearing if Councilman Lopez has concluded. Public hearing's open, you remember the audience wish to address city council on this item? If not, hearing is not closed, there's no formal action, am I correct? And I just want to say that obviously next week we'll have a discussion on the budget, obviously a discussion on personnel, it breaks it down from each department to discuss those positions, and we can have a conversation further next week on personnel if you wish. We are going to go into closed session after this, well, later in this meeting today, just want to recognize the police department for all the hard work the police department has done, continues to do for this community, and you are very important assets and personnel and family members of this city of Montclair, so thank you for being here this evening. And with that, we'll move on to the...
We do need a receive-and-file action, so, just, yeah.
See, that's the problem here, is when we got this bill, when I got the CalCity's, you know, the action notice, and, you know, CalCity was opposed to, I wrote the letter of opposition to this bill here, and so, I guess I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to learn this bill, even though I think it's, I mean, it's important to understand our vacancy issues, but this process is just another layer of bureaucracy, so I get a motion.
Okay. I will move the item as presented.
Lopez moves, second by Rue, let's just do electronic. All right, five-zero, so next year I'll know better how to deal with this now, this is brand new. Now we can go to our consent calendar, and I'll start with my right, anything in pool on my right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it may sound like a lot, but some of these are one, simple one-question stuff, with the exception of maybe one of them. These are all under C agreement, so C like Charlie?
Two.
Okay. Four.
All right.
Fourteen, fifteen, seventeen.
Okay, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen.
Fifteen, seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. Anything else on my right, the pool, how about my left? Anything you want to pull my left?
Nothing.
No? Okay, I just want to say in item B nine, this is the city of Chino Hills admission into the Animal Resource Center, which we're a member of the JPA. In August, the grand opening should take place, I don't have that date in front right now, but there will be a date in August, and in two days, June 18, ARC will take over animal services here in the city of Montclair, and I haven't heard anything, so it sounds like everything is moving forward, so that's the curve. So moving on to the agenda now.
Just a quick report on that, Mr. Mayor. So we picked up the dogs from the Inland Valley Humane Society today.
Okay.
And I believe the total was four dogs and two dead ones.
That's it?
Four living dogs and two dead dogs.
Okay.
Dead dogs, I believe, are part of maybe some sort of a case, and so we have to freeze them and retain them until proper disposition can be provided.
All right, let's move on to item C two, so Councilman Lopez, I'll let you run the show.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this item, I just wanted to know, how much is the property owner paying in application fees and sewer connection fees?
As far as the application, there's nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars that he pays to the city for the application process to go through you guys, and then there's a six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollar fee for an emergency hookup review by Lafco. And your other question was?
That was it, just the property owner paying app fees and sewer fees, connection fees.
And those are determined by the cost, the sewer fee, connection fees are a percentage of what it costs to hook up to the sewer system through IUA.
To IUAs?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just, as a comment, I'm glad that this is brought forward, I'm glad that there is a, down the line, an annexation, a motion or process that will happen, I've been a big advocate of, even if it's piecemeal, gaining the properties on the southern end of the city between Chino and Montclair, so I'm glad that happened, I was glad when the car wash was one of those that was annexed in, so thank you to staff for this, I was just curious as to what they paid for this, and I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Okay, let's go to C four.
This one might be a little bit more extensive, depending on answers. This is regarding the continuation of a contract, or the renewing of a new contract for crossing I know that next week, or in ten days, we will be discussing the budget, and in the staff report, under fiscal impact, there is a line in here that states that all cities' management services, which is the company that would provide the crossing guards, has calculated the estimated annual program cost to be two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Included in the police department's prelim fiscal year 2025 budget, 2026 budget, we have an allocation of two-fifteen, and basically there is a deficit of already thirty thousand dollars one hundred and forty-four. The line that I'm troubled with in here, it states, because projected costs are estimated to exceed the amount budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year, starting July one, the department will evaluate actual costs and determine whether to request more funding during the mid-year budget review process. Now, we're here tonight, we have the item brought before us, and this is to grant the contracting company their request for an increase in what they pay, because they have to keep up with mandated state-of-California minimum wage requirements, and they also want to remain competitive to maintain their crossing guards, to keep them, so they don't have attrition. Why not accommodate and address that thirty thousand dollar deficit now? I don't see, based upon what they've stated, why would we wait six months from now to grant them the additional funding? Why can't we just?
Okay, yeah, you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
Well, one, because there likely is not a deficit, this is the same language that they put forth every single year, that they are going to do hourly rate increases, and they use that to justify an increase, but in fact, what they actually bill to the city on an annual basis is substantially less than what their quoted amount is. I go through this action with the police department every single year, where the All Cities comes in with a significantly higher amount, I look at the amount that they request every single year, I compare that to the actual expenditures, and I adjust the amount that we authorize for budgeting purposes to what I believe is going to be the actual number that will work for them, and I would say that more often than not, and when I say more often than not, I would probably say that ninety-five percent of the time, I am pretty accurate on what the actual number will be, and this year or next year is no different, the company came in asking for a higher amount, same language, salary increases, and yeah, but that's not what you actually bill, you bill substantially less, for whatever reasons. And the reason may be because not all their crossing guards were staffing that day, and therefore they weren't paying the individuals, but it's always significantly less, and I would venture that if there is a requirement for an adjustment at mid-year, it would probably be minimal at best. If we're talking about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand authorized, if they end up getting to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand by the end of the fiscal year, I would be surprised.
Okay, understanding that history, that's encouraging, so we've never really had an instance in which there's been a need to amend the contract to...
Yeah.
...significant amount of an increase?
I would say that I don't recall in, not only recent, but long-term memory, that they, we've ever had to do a mid-year budget adjustment for all cities because it was unnecessary.
I appreciate that, thank you for that. Related, back in March, you sent out an email to us regarding the additional crossing guard at Benson in San Bernardino, there was, according to what you stated to us in an email, there was approximately ten thousand dollars in the city's general fund to incorporate that payment of that one guard for the remainder of the school year. This new request, this new contract for crossing guards, does it have the continuation of that crossing guard at that location in it?
No, it doesn't, because the city of Ontario graciously and innocently decided to pick up the cost of that crossing guard.
Perfect, so we will have one there.
And I didn't press the issue with them.
Well, okay, I know the issue, though, was whether that individual was going to walk our side of Montclair to provide services to our adults and students.
Correct, but the city of Ontario interpreted that because they were going to their school in Ontario, it was their liability, it was their responsibility.
All right, that's, those are the questions I had regarding the item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, C fourteen.
Find the page.
Page two-six-three.
Yes, regarding neighborhood housing partnership, I think it was more or less on the contract. First of all, it states in the staff report that we received a grant, or will receive a grant, from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, but in the report, from what I can see, that amount was not stated, do you know what the amount is that we were given, or is that an amount to be determined?
No, the grant is listed under fiscal impact, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars.
Over a three-year period, okay, I did overlook that, thank you for that explanation. Now, with respect to the contract itself, the terms of the contract, both parties can terminate the agreement within ten days' notice for whatever reason. Let's say that a senior that wants to make adjustments to their home, put in railing, maybe put in a safer tub or a ramp in their home, they're in the middle of either the approval... they're in the middle of either the approval process, contracting process, that this organization will approve. And within a 10-day period, one of the parties decides to terminate the contract, what will happen to that, those senior residents that were getting services in the meantime? Because within 10 days, the contract will be null and void. What will happen with the progress of work in progress? Will it revert back to the city to maintain and finish?
Well, the funding is the city's to administer. And if a contractor decided to walk away from the contract, we would simply have to find a new vendor.
So then the project for that, those senior residents, would no doubt be on hold?
They would be until, they would be delayed.
Okay. All right. Would my colleagues be open to the idea of increasing that 10-day requirement to a 30-day requirement?
I think we just leave it as is. I mean, there's benefits having 10 days. If it happens, we're not satisfied, we can immediately terminate the contract. If there's a project ongoing, we will, we can manage ourselves. We had to, our staff can, or find another contractor to get it completed. But I think trying to go 30 days, especially if there's a conflict or issue, the lesser the better for us to resolve, to eliminate that contract.
So then that said, there would be nothing that would prevent us from hiring an individual contractor or company from finishing that job, just on an individual basis?
Well, we still have to go through a selection process.
Yeah.
And if we were to change this, we would have to go back and renegotiate this with Neighborhood Housing Partnership.
No, and that was my only concern, was just existing work in progress. These seniors are dependent upon it. If the rug is pulled from whatever end, what would happen to them? All right.
If I might add, the 10-day right to terminate is only on behalf of the city.
Well, okay, I'm reading here the last line of 6A on page two of the agreement. Consultant may also terminate this agreement by serving upon the city at least 10 days prior written notice.
And that should be 30. You'll see there's a 30 in front of the 10.
Oh, so they have 30?
So there's a typo in that number.
Oh, okay.
The city has 10-day, the other party has 30.
30 days.
Yeah, you're right, it does say 30. The 10 in parentheses is incorrect.
And things got so bad, and there's a project going on, and we had to get rid of NPHS. They're doing a great job, we had to get rid of them. Then we will make sure it gets done.
Fortunately, the city attorney has the authority to make last-minute changes, and she can correct the number.
I appreciate that. That actually puts me at ease with respect to that.
All right.
That's it.
How about C 15, the next one?
I'm getting to the page.
Go to.
Real quickly on this one, this bridge that will be constructed, is this the same bridge that had the unfortunate experience of burning about two, three years ago? The one that we bought the trust to replace?
Oh, no, no, no. First off, this is not the bridge to nowhere. I want to make that clear. No, so this is a brand-new bridge. It will be installed by the vendor, by the contractor or the developer, Trammell Crowe Residential. So right now, there is a bridge that was used by Vulcan when they went back and forth between the properties and Mona Vista Avenue. That's, bridge is going to be abandoned. It will not be used as part of this because of its age. But it will be turned into a decorative feature. So it will be retained, it will not be destroyed. They will be doing a prefabricated bridge that they will drop in place. And that will be the new bridge used by residents traversing between Huntington and Mona Vista Avenue, Ripton Street.
Okay, so there's no existing bridge in the area in which they're wanting to build eventually.
This will be all brand-new bridge.
Okay, that's it. That takes care of that question, Mr. Mayor.
All right, last one is, I believe, C 17.
This is regarding renovations or, yeah, my question regarding this was for construction of traffic signal upgrades on Holt Boulevard from Ramona to Benson. And providing the water connection, I believe, for recyclable water that would then water the new additions on the median, correct?
Yeah, so the changes for H R Green, the change in compensation, and that is to construct an existing or construct an extension on Central Avenue down in Holt Boulevard to allow us to use recycled water in the medians on Holt Boulevard.
And maybe I'm reading too much into the weeds here with respect to the verbiage of the staff report. But the request for the funds, the $30,000, is merely, is it merely to go ahead and pay for, trying to find the reading here?
It's for design fees.
The design, so it's not the actual work itself? Not the construction cost?
Yes, it's for design of the recycled water improvements that are needed. And it's to provide a compensation for the delay in the contract design over the last few years, as well as to provide for design of a property owner driveway closure.
All right. I appreciate.
So just so you'll know, we had already installed purple pipe from the I-10 freeway all the way down to just short of Holt Boulevard. This closes that gap. So I don't expect it to be a significant amount of money because we already paid the bulk of it.
I appreciate your explanation, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think that was it. I did forget another item, but I'll, since for the sake of time, we'll talk later. Thank you.
Okay, let's get a consent calendar approval here. Motion.
Mayor, I will move the adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
All right, moved by Lopez. Seconded by Rue. We'll do electronic vote. Huh? You guys are quiet on the left side now. Okay, that's adopted, five zero. Communications, I'll start with the Human Services Department.
Just real quickly here, I wanted to say, get ready for a fun summer. I'm happy to announce our 64th Annual Concert and Movie Series, bringing you free entertainment right here at Omaha Hoffman Park every Tuesday from June 17 to August 5. So tomorrow, June 17, at 8 o'clock, the city will kick off our series with the movie Inside Out 2. Come and enjoy the Sweet and Snowy Food Truck that will also be there. June 24, at 7, get ready to dance to top 40 hits with the band Soto. The Berilus Serapis Food Truck will also be there. And on July 1, at 7:00 PM, the band 33 Thunder will be playing some classic and modern country music. And a line dancer will be there to show you the moves. We are hoping to secure a food truck for this event, but please check our social media for any updates. On July 8, we'll have Moana 2. And the Sweet and Snowy Food Truck will be joining us again. And on July 15, starting at 6:00 PM, don't miss our special vendor fair. Browse unique crafts from local vendors and connect with community nonprofits. The evening continues at 7:00 PM with the band Anything for Salinas. It's a fantastic tribute band to the late singer Selena. Tacos, Chicken, X Food Truck will be there for you to grab dinner while you are browsing the vendor tables. So a few reminders for these park evenings. Admission is always free, everyone's welcome. Remember to bring your blankets, lawn chairs, friends and family. We'll have free crafts and activities for the kids to enjoy. And if you need any further information, please contact our Human Services Department. I also have flyers over here on the ledge, if anybody would like those.
Okay. I appreciate that. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated in the agenda, there's a few items for closed session. The first one is to meet regarding labor negotiations with Mr. Starr, designated labor negotiator. And then there's a request to meet in closed session regarding real property negotiations on two different properties, as indicated. A third one is to meet in closed session regarding pending litigation of Jacquez or Jaquez versus Montclair. And the fourth is another pending litigation closed session regarding Fuentes Garcia versus Lopez-Montclair. Other than those four items, that's all I have this evening.
All right, City Manager.
Items.
No items, okay. There's two items listed on the mayor. One, we'll meet on June 26 for the budget. And the second item is regarding the policy and procedure manual, which will just continue that to our next meeting in July. I know we have a very busy closed session. Five items for discussion in closed session, so I want to make my comments real short. I don't know if we can make our comments short in this, we go closed session, or we go to closed session now, come back out and do council communications. Is there a preference?
I'm fine with either.
We're good with that? Okay, now I'll just, if everybody can make their comments short or condensed. Just real fast, I just want to say thank you to staff for all the events that have taken place in Montclair. I won't name them all, but just thank you. Want to just, the fire department, and of course, police department, when we had the double commercial fire on Memorial Day. I know that was a difficult activity for both personnel to deal with, but just want to recognize them. Obviously, we'll be dark on July 2, so this is our next regular city council meeting will be the third Monday of July. Finally, just want to recognize the Montclair Little League Brewers, the Team Brewers, who are, who won the championship of District 23. I understand that's the first time in 40 years, perhaps, they won it. A Montclair team's won a championship. So we'll have them here. I haven't told the city clerk yet here. I think the first meeting in August. I'll coordinate with you, and we'll recognize them at that meeting. That's all I have. Chris, I'll lead off with you.
Thank you. So we didn't have a council meeting two weeks ago, so I didn't get a chance to congratulate Marcia Richter and Tanise Johnson for their Woman of Distinction Award with Seroptimist. Also, the County of San Bernardino is offering a summer reading program, which families can take advantage of at the Montclair Library. There are some pretty cool guests that come with animals and dress as clowns and all that fun stuff. The jamboree which just passed, in my opinion, was very successful. I don't know the numbers or anything like that, but I know that for $15 online, we purchased a wristband for my son, and he was able to spend the entire time doing petting zoos and going on rides and riding ponies. And it was money very, very well spent. And considering how expensive now the LA County Fair is and other fairs in the area, it was a fantastic deal for families in our city. Also, Happy Pride Month. This will be the 55th anniversary of the first pride marches that happened in June of 1970, following the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall riots. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Mendez.
Just very sorry and sad to hear about Jerry Sharbuck passing away. He was a good man, and I worked a lot with him over the years. And sad to hear about Mark Kinsey also. That was, that's very, very sad. I miss the Country Fair jamboree. I wish I could have been there, not to ride the rides, you know, but... I did talk to a couple residents, and they said that they seemed like it wasn't that crowded, like normal. And I said, I don't know, I wasn't there. That's all I, that's all I told. And my last thing is, Richton Street, is it Richton or Ricton?
I say tomato, you say tomato.
Tomato, tomato. Okay, Councilman Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. It's been a while since we've been here, about a month. On May 21, I attended Supervisor Hagman's annual open house. It was, the weather cooperated this year, it wasn't 100 degrees. The weather was still warm, but not 100 degrees. And he easily had several hundred individuals there. I saw a handful of Montclair residents there, but it was a great conglomerate and gathering of residents from Upland, Montclair, Ontario, Chino, Chino Hills, and even some from the Diamond Bar Walnut area. Supervisor Hagman had departments from almost all county departments there represented and willing to help provide services. Their fire department, Chino Valley Fire, you can't knock them because many of their firemen are former firefighters of ours. They cook some good burgers and hot dogs. They did burgers this year instead of just hot dogs, so that was a hit. But anyhow, it was a great turnout, and I was glad to attend. I will echo the congrats and the kudos to our Montclair Little League Brewers, I believe the AAA division, and their championship in the Montclair, in the Little League Division. I'm getting tongue-tied here as I'm trying to rush. But congratulations to them, and I'm looking forward to honoring them in August. Let's see, let's see, let's see. On June 6, I know there's a, the big topic of the news and of the water cooler talks throughout the country and dining room tables is not just the situation in the Middle East, but it is the ongoing discussion and issue of immigration. I had the privilege on June 6 of being asked to attend a gathering of Latin elected officials to meet with the Mexican consulate general and meet with them privately and personally. About 20 cities had sent council members of Mexican descent there. And it was an eye-opening experience. I would actually like to see services be extended to members of our community, being that it's the Mexilen consulate, it would only be for Mexican individuals. But I have always said that those individuals that are here that have contributed to society and paid their taxes and have not committed crimes, our government should extend an open hand and not a fist in trying to make sure that they are granted eventually citizenship. The consulate general, I was amazed by the services that they offer. I was amazed by the statistics. For example, every year, just from California residents alone or those that are undocumented or illegal, whatever term you want to say, they remit back $65 million, easily on the low end, back to their families. And that was eye-opening. I thought actually it would be a little bit more, but that's the low end. Whatever your opinion is of immigration, I'm not here to discuss that or argue that with you. I'm here to say that I learned some things. And I think there's a, perhaps a church or a nonprofit can host an event with the consulate or representatives from the consulate to offer those services. Like, I was unaware that I could possibly, we'd have, they'd have to do some, I guess, genealogical work, yeah, I'm tongue-tied tonight, on whether I could actually apply and be granted dual citizenship because of my various forms of Mexican heritage and my ties to Mexico on both sides of my family. But anyhow, I know that there's many residents who might be in that position. So I personally would like to do something for them. But that was a great experience, I was honored. And it turns out that one of the elected officials there, who's the mayor in San Gabriel Valley, we got to talk, and we found out we were cousins. And isn't that stereotypical of a Mexican event? You go there and you find out you're cousins. I mean, that's the joke. Comedians even bring that up, that you go to an event and you find out you're cousins. It happened. And we took pictures, and sure enough, we contacted families. Like, you didn't know that so-and-so was related? I didn't know so-and-so was related. We were cousins, so it was great. It was great, it was meant for me to go, so I was honored by that. And then, real quickly. There have been many instances throughout the city of power outages. On Kingsley, on Orchard, closer to Mills. Back around June 2, there was a power outage that happened. I talked to the contact at SoCal Ed that I have, who's been a friend, and I've worked with her through various capacities, with her working with other electeds. Residents, Southern California Edison is doing everything they can to try to upgrade the electric connections. They classified our city as a more, for all intents and purposes, an older community in need of upgraded infrastructure. And they're working on it. The best way that you can get that sped along is by filing a notice with Southern California Edison when the power goes down, because that then puts that area or that pole or series of poles on the map to be replaced. And if they replace it even piecemeal, they will do it. So for the residents who have been experiencing that, I know there's been a slew of them on Facebook and Montclair Connects. Please be patient, contact SoCal Ed, they will get on it. That's what they've promised me. And then just real quickly, Mark Kinsey that we're talking about was the longtime general manager for the Mona Vista Water District. He has a personal tie and connection to our family. As many of you know, my father serves on the board. Mark was the general manager when my father got on the board in 2003. And Mark took my dad under his wing. So my father is very much grateful for Mark Kinsey's mentorship. He will be missed. He fought a on-and-off battle with cancer. But we now know that Mark Kinsey is in peace. So God bless his family. May they be comforted by God's peace that passes all understanding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Rue. All right, Councilman Rue.
I'll follow up with two items Councilmember Lopez mentioned. One, it's very sad to hear about general manager Kinsey. I was on the Montavista Water Board when we hired him. He was a good, very good choice for general manager, so he will be missed. Councilmember, with the event with the Mexican consul general, I would like to work with you on that. I have more than a few contacts with that office due to my professional life. And I have helped several people on a few things they needed. So I'd be very willing to see if we could get something like that going out here. It would certainly be a benefit to this end of the inland empire. Having said that, I have missed a couple of events. The Country Fair jamboree was one of them. I have been in Sacramento, then Washington DC, then back to Sacramento in my professional life. And crossing time zones is not always fun. But I do it for work. I'm sole provider. That's my only income, so I have to keep doing my job. I did want to mention that on May 15th, I attended an event at Montclair High School where several of our students were being recognized for publishing a book. It's a book on leadership for young people. Now, three of us up here, Mayor Dutre, Councilmember Mendez and I, are graduates of Montclair High School. I don't know about any of you, but when I was at Montclair High School, I didn't know any published authors. Did any students publish books when you were there? I was able to obtain the, one of the...
Yeah, Bill, Harvey Liu, he wrote a book on the Rubik's Cube when it came out. He mastered it first and wrote a book about it.
Okay. So, one. It's, this is the poster they used. I'd like to see if we could get some of the students here and recognize them. Two of the students at one point had been homeless and they continued to work on this project, so this is great. Honoring them is something we should be doing. This is what we want for the future with our young people who are interested in literature. And moving forward, I said to some of them, I look forward to having you publish the great American novel, and I hope you do. This Thursday marks Juneteenth. It observes June 19th, 1865, when in Texas, General Granger announced to the enslaved peoples that they were now freed. The Emancipation Proclamation had been enacted 900 days earlier. But Texas was very remote in that era and we didn't have the communications we have today. This was momentous day and should be observed as we are observing it in this city and other places. It allowed the enslaved peoples to finally understand, because they had not been told, that they were now free. Free to do as they choose, free to take the jobs they wished to take. And it was a wonderful, I'm shortening what I had written out here. In Washington, I'm always reminded of our Constitution. It is a wonderful living document. It specifically lays out the three branches of government: executive, legislative, the House and the Senate, and the courts. All three are independent. They are separate from one another. For example, only Congress can enact or make laws. They're provided oversight over each other and there is no unitary Congress, no unitary president, and no unitary court, unique in the world for what we have done. And I do think it's a wonderful document. It includes in there something valuable to everybody, that we are all innocent until proven guilty in a court of law. And at times, when we all rush to judgment, it's good for us to remember that. I had a few other things. I will keep them out. The last thing, and just a piece of history, has little impact on Montclair. Some of you have seen the movie League of Their Own. Well, the last living player who played in the All-American Girls Professional Baseball League died. She was 104, Betsy Yocum, or known as Betsy Sokum-Yocum. She played with the league throughout the Midwest most of her career. The league was from 1943 to 1954. After that, she decided to receive her master's degree in physical education and wound up, of all things, teaching baseball in schools, specifically in South Bend, Indiana. She was the last link to that history of these young ladies who went and played baseball to entertain while most of our male baseball players were in the war. At first, they were considered a novelty, but when they were finished, girls' sports boomed because many young ladies said, "This is what I want to do. If they can do it, so can I." And all of our young ladies in sports programs today, really, this stems from those people. Her uniform is, her uniform hangs in the Smithsonian Institution and I have seen it. And if you get a chance to ever go to the Smithsonian, look at the exhibit. It's part of American history and it's really great. Although all of the players from that league have passed on, their legacy continues. And I think that's important when we look at history, how it can touch each one of us in so many different ways. And other things I have, I'll leave for another night. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I just, since you guys spoke, Memorial Day was a great event. As usual, the opening in Sunset Park, you haven't been there yet. Beautiful park. It's nice to see residents, kids out there. I've been driving around several times and I noticed that. We had a caution cleanup as well, a couple, three weeks ago. Very successful cleanup of an alley. The police volunteer dinner, recognizing our reserve officers and our chaplains. That went well. I know Councilmember Mendez attended the Montclair High School graduation, which he didn't talk about. It was his, actually his, also his 40th graduation, anniversary. And then finally, how many fathers do we have in the room? What was yesterday? Any fathers? Happy Father's Day to all the guys in the room. Let's go to closed session.